This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
All right, call this meeting order. Please stand up to a bunch of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Iser, Savage. Rochus.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? All right. There was an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting. I made the motion for approval of minutes and reports, minutes from June 10th and 24th meetings and reports from the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Controller, Code Office, Health Department, Park and Rec, Planning Commission. Do I have any seconds? Savage.
Yeah.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Iser.
Martin.
Yes. An update DEI other than having their events later in the summer? There is no new update?
Go ahead.
Moving on to old business, Councilman Barnhart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a for second reading ordinance, line 24-01, food and towing.
Savage.
Yes.
Rochus.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Moving on, new business, Councilman Barnhart.
In accordance with Governor Shapiro's 2024 and 2025 budget proposal for a $25 million Main Street Matters program, which creates more economic opportunities for small businesses and Main Streets, I'm asking for council's approval so the city administrator, Derek Backraine, code clerk, trial counsel, can send letters to our legislators to express our support for this program.
Will this help bring any funds back into?
We're hoping that they did money it, that there was an article in paper about Daniel getting money.
Do we need to? I'm not against it, I just ask questions, we're just asking back for questions. Do we need to like apply for grants or is your application to fill out to get the money? I mean, it's great to like spread of support. I think anyone, everyone's gonna say they're in support, but is there a way back to get the money?
The legislators will get a hold of the governor's office. We're interested in that and go from there and say, yeah, you guys can get it.
All right. Do you want to put in the motion to also research and apply for any type of funds for that also? So do you two birds with one stone?
I'll amend that.
All right. I second.
Martina.
Iser.
Savage.
Yeah.
Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
All right, moving on, purchase of laptop and InfraDad software, Councilman Martina.
Derek, hand out some information. I'm looking to purchase a laptop and do installation for DFW.
How long is this going? Is this come with warranty, I'm assuming? I hope. Savage.
Yeah.
Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Iser. Mr. Packer, Sesquahana Avenue change order number two.
We have the change order for Sesquahana Avenue. This is a second change order. It's an increase of $12,844.36. This is to remove trees above vines that were performed by contractor instead of PPO. They moved everything below the vines per original contract, but above it wasn't in the contract. So I'm just looking for a vote in permanent.
And we have the funds to cover the difference?
Yeah.
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Rochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yeah.
Iser. Moving on, DCD multi-modal transportation fund, Shabaker.
The end of this month, DCD multi-modal transportation grant is due. That is a street skate grant. There's a few projects that we could really apply for this for within the city that were looking for future and current projects. So I know we need to go for this. I'm just really looking for, I guess, really some a vote on what project council would like to see this.
Well, what are the different? I know there's different projects, but which ones?
Sesquahana Avenue, we have Packer. Those are the two biggest.
Other than those two, which, you know, we're still slowly getting funding? Is there something smaller out there that we could use for this fund? For this, for, you know, for these funds to help get a project going or completed? Or anything like that?
I mean, we have market street that were we were added or given some additional instructions, but enough which ate up some of the funds that so we're not able to do as much as we would have liked with original. So this could, you know, help further that project as well.
So where are we at on Market Street with that? You said you had some funds that were eaten up. So what, how much did it take away? Did it take away half the money or where are we at on it?
It took, it took out about half the projects. So before we were from 10th Street all the way down to where Wolverton.
Yeah, comes out there along some of the roads there.
And then also we were doing the South 10th Streets slash Chestnut Wolverton intersection right there. It ate up basically to the point that we were only able to do 10, between 10th and 11th, and we're asked to end up to give us funds for the Chestnut Wolverton.
I mean, I say we throw the money into that. There's no point in doing a small portion and leaving the rest done. I say we throw, I say we throw the money into that. We're still, we're still getting money towards Sesquahana. We're getting money towards Packer. We're not getting money towards the smaller stuff and in a final finish to Market Street or something there. So that's my opinion. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I say if that's finished, Market Street is the main, one of the main routes in Sunbury that people are seeing the first one to Sunbury. Let's finish that, let's make that look nice.
Well, the only problem is between 10th and 11th is still stagnated because of bend out change in the goal and so forth. That's gonna sit there definitely till next year, possibly 26.
At least we have money for it though, when it comes to that part. I mean, I mean, we're still getting money for Sesquahana. We're still getting money for Packer.
Packer is going to turn it for next year and I know we're short, so.
And, you know, and we're still going through the engineering processes for that, but it really, this could really depend on or help with the curving if we decide to go that route to narrow that roadway a little bit and do water mitigation because that could help with this, with that street skate, the sidewalks that if we wanted to go that route for Packers Street. So that's just.
My own opinion is I don't think you should narrow Packers Street, regardless of a business goes in there or not. You still need to, my own opinion is that you want a wider street for those trucks. I know the trucks are not the best for that neighborhood, but you know, you don't want to make it even more difficult with narrower streets. That's just my own opinion. I say we throw it in the Market Street because that's a main route through Sunbury. Packers Street, Sesquahana, we're getting more money for that. That's, Derek, what is this for? Like how much can we apply for?
So realistically, what we could expect on a perfect day if we were awarded would be $500,000.
And how much are we short on? Well, how much was taken out of, from Market Street by eating up with the cost of whatever ate it up?
I would have to go back and look exactly how much was eaten up, but we were given about $800,000. So, and that was supposed to do the entirety of the project. We have to go back and re-assess the estimates, I guess I should say, because things have changed. But, so we, it's about 50% of the original estimate.
I mean, I say, my vote is for Market Street. I can't vote, I can't speak for anyone else. John, what do you think? Market Street where everyone drives or Packers Street where we're at right now?
I'd like to give it a good think.
Well, I mean, but we need to have it now, but we need to make a vote for it now. We can't give it a good think in here.
Just off the top of my head, without thinking, I think I would see Market Street finished because that is the lane.
I mean, uh, route.
Lisa.
John, listen, you listened a second ago. Market Streets are already tabled by Penda. Next year on the agenda is Packer. So we don't know when you finish Packer. That's gonna sit there unfinished. And guaranteed, I don't think Marcus we've done in 26, excuse me, 25, it looks like it's gonna be 26. Packer has to be done.
Lisa. So how much are we short on Packer? I mean, if 500,000 isn't gonna cover the difference, so what does it matter at that point? At least, you know, we get this project probably funded by what the numbers we have now. At least we have that project finished rather than having two projects sitting in limbo if we don't have funds for either project.
The money that we already have on multi. The multi, I believe, the contracts, I believe, are four years, three years. Yeah, we have to look at one of our contracts that we have. It's sunshine, but they're around three.
As Nate's, I mean, as Derek's looking at Nate, where do you feel?
I'm sorry, did we get an answer where? What was Lisa's opinion on the Packers Street thing and the money we were short on that one? Is Steve in the room?
No, Steve's not. Derek's looking up the difference that we are on Packers Street. Lisa was in favor of Packers Street. Jim, you're in favor of Packers Street, you're taking it?
We're trying to finish Packer because like you said, there's two industry sitting there. And, and closing the streets down, I'm in favor of your saying.
Yeah.
That's foolish, but Packer has to get done.
Yeah, but I say, what's the, like I said, what's the, we'll call it the shortfall.
Let's make it easy. Mr. Whipple, which street do you think should be done?
Packer.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that, but you know, Packer's been liked out for the last 20 years. I don't think it's sitting there for another year is gonna make a difference, but.
I know, the thing I was told last week was we check that every week and fill those holes. That's the shit that they do.
Well, I'm not gonna disagree because the holes in front of there are pretty deep. Always, you know, do like a little zigzag to make it through so I don't blow my tires out either.
So according to what I talked to Steve about as far as Packer goes, Packer itself is at the point where we can obviously do some work, some base work to get the roadway back to a good condition, but it's beginning to start to blow out, as he calls it, where we're gonna have to start doing some subbase work and significant more work inside of the actual roadway if it keeps deteriorating at the rate that it is, which will come with the larger tax, whichever, larger price tag attached to it. So that's why, one of the reasons that Steve is pushing to get this done more quickly or as quickly as possible, because if we prolong it any longer, the price tag for that street will go up.
But so, but how much, but how much are we short though? I mean, we're short $2 million. 500,000 isn't gonna, I mean, that gets it across the line.
500,000 will because the authority is putting money in the.
I'm just using that as a number. I don't, if you don't know the number, I mean.
They have maybe even quarter million dollars. I'm not sure what we're forgetting, but Derek, you're forgetting something. On Market Street, the authority has a line to put it in Market Street. Derek.
Better put their line in for the, this, this stormwater?
Yes.
Yes.
So we don't even know when they're gonna be doing that.
Well, I don't know if this is helpful. My perspective is I think I would rather see, I have three quick points. If, if the money can go to Packer, then I'm about that. And before we get into substructure, and the other thing is with Market, if we're already looking at a Penda delay, then I think it's, then we're gonna be waiting two years anyway. The first thing is that there's a lot of facade work and curving work that's going on Market Street that that might also interfere with the timeline. So I mean, I guess I'm kind of stuck between the substructure of Packer leading to a bigger price tag later or what we can actually get completed. And I mean, honestly, my, my actual answer is I wish that I had some numbers to look at before I had to vote on something.
That's what we're trying to figure out here now, Nate. So I don't know if we can get the numbers. I know, like you said, we have an estimated number for Market. We're trying to figure out Packer right now.
We're about, we're about 500,000 short. However, some of that is municipal authority money where we can't use this street skate money toward municipal. This could be used for some stormwater work, but it can't be used, say, say they want to redo everything on the roadway. That is all their infrastructure that is up to municipal authority if they want to replace everything on Packers Street. This money, for instance, can't be used to replace water lines or just sewer lines.
But the stormwater, which we're replacing, that's exactly what we need the money for. It will become one front from the tracks all the way backwards.
I don't have an estimate that breaks out water, stormwater.
I'm just saying, we're, we're, our, our main focus right now is Packers Street and Sesquahana. We're getting, that's the majority where our grant focuses at. We're not focusing on other projects that could help the city as well. My, like I said, my viewpoint is to put it on Market where the majority of the traffic flows through the city. They're gonna see that, that's my opinion. I agree with Mr. Whipple saying that Mark, Packers Street doesn't done. I drive that daily as well, but it goes back to whatever, wherever we go on. All right, so let's make a vote here. Lisa, you make the motion because it's a street project, wherever you want to throw the money.
I want to vote Packers Street, but I also think if we some of this on Packer possibly alleviate some local fuels that could go to paving, so.
There is, there is a large, a large, large chunk, I believe, to the tune of about $300,000 being taken from local fuels to be put on Packers Street. In theory, if you use the multi-modal toward that.
Yeah, but that's in theory though, not to be rude towards you, Lisa.
No, it's not.
But it's like, we haven't been, we didn't pave last year. Steve isn't gonna, I almost say Steve. The council is choosing not to pave right now, maybe small spots. So there's no guarantee that money's gonna get anything paved in the near future.
We have to have the money to do the paving.
Oh, I, I agree with, now I agree with you, but.
Yeah, we need to have the help, but we are struggling to find people to work with.
True.
It is an informal motion, I vote Packers Street, please.
Savage.
I'm, I thought the motion is to throw the money to Packers Street specifically.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Rochus.
No.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser. All right, moving on, police grant, CSIU mental health worker apprentice. Order the chief real quick and he has all the details on it.
So what we look at is a mental health coresponder program. Mental thing that was from state as well as CSIU, mental health also. What this coresponder will be is a individual who is dedicated to just Sunbury and in Sunbury Police Department. The individual that would be picked for this position, if he voted on and he would get the yes on it, would be an individual that basically is, has a bachelor's degree in sociology, social work, psychology, one year experience in crisis services, act 33, 34, FBI appearances, special skills, knowledge of de-escalation, three of two into one process. This program's in effect right now at the mental police department. They've had it in effect for some time. It's working very well. This is fully funded. It's a grant that would have to be applied for with council approval. Do we go with Derek to sit down and actually speak with these individuals in the near, very near future to bring this person forward? It would be a $100,000 grant that again is fully funded. This person would be a mental health worker in the station. Person who would be selected would be selected by the chief of police. Doing that, being, this individual is, is working in the police department. They were both with vests, they come with other tools, they have their own vehicle. Everything is fully funded. Some money through Friday, I could elect to change it if I wish. The hours are varied as well, so.
Traveler, sorry, how long is it funded for? Like how long would this person be available?
Right now, this is funded, will be funded for one year. And then if you reevaluate and see how it works out. Again, this person, and give you a little background, this person will always say, during whatever shift they work, or any other shift they respond with police officer, they go to the mental health crises in Sunbury. If there was nothing going on at that time, they go out and they check up on people from the night before, the week before. They just, they basically keep in contact with the individuals that have mental health issues and continue to check, make sure to take their medication and things like that. But if it's solely just over Sunbury, if we get North Hunter, 40 pounds, you got a call, they would not be responding there. They could stay and save and deal with our city or our city residents.
You said Milton had this, correct?
Milton had.
How long had they had this?
I was gonna say in Congress, I'm sure. I just, I believe it's a few years now that they've been, they've been working it and the order and the rate. We were selected along with Shemah and Calhoun. But the biggest new position was in Sunbury. So that would be, and it was a great, great program. If you want to know more, I can reach more information on it, but it's, it's fully funded, it's a $100,000 grant that we can be applying for and.
All right, any other questions for the chief?
I can just say, there's a monitor radio on a daily basis. A lot of departments are calling for crisis workers in county and they're not getting support because workers equal other things. So I think this would be a great tool for the police department to manage their department.
And again, this, this individual would be a case in our department. They would be carrying their own computer. Maybe just we have the supply and all this area.
Questions, anyone? All right.
I have one statement, I'm sorry, Derek.
Go ahead, Nate.
So if, I think when we look at the, when we look at hiring somebody and finalizing the contracts, we just want to be careful what kind of liability insurance we need to have or if they're making suicide assessments or something to those effects because those require liability. So I just want to be sure we're, show off the details.
So the office, Nate, the officer would basically be going in and de-escalating this situation at first. The crisis worker would be there in the help of the de-escalation. But an officer response would be first, they would be responding, but they cannot put any hands on, they can't do any.
There's more, there's an observer, a talker downer type of.
Correct, and then it helps the process with the role one.
Nate, does that help answer our question?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll make the motion to apply for the CSIU mental health worker grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser. Savage.
Yeah.
Rochus.
Yes. Moving on, approval to hire corporal. I'm also gonna turn it over to the chief and talk about that process a little bit so everyone's aware.
As we're only moving forward in police department, we have a sergeant, we have a chief and sergeant in place now looking to bring, quickly change the manual of corporal. I elected to, basically with this, I'm gonna put it out to civil service, let them know that this is approved tonight. I will not be giving the test like as of years before. It was the chief just gave the test and then the oral board was in front of just some local people. What I elected to do is keep fair for the department and the officers. I'm going to have another chief from a earlier department give the test. He's going to pick the questions. He's doing the title 18, title 75, and I will be doing our rules regulations and policies. Then there'll be 25 questions from that. There'll be 25 questions on the title 18, title 75 that is picked from that chief. After that process is done, the officer, or the candidate for that position will then move on to the oral boards. I elected to use someone out of like coming county. I think the, the Friday, the, the, the city or a case from that area so that we don't know anybody and it's just equal across the board.
Questions on that process and anything like that?
I just want me to comment, I'm the chief.
All right, so I'll make the motion to start the hiring of the, I mean, excuse me, the hiring of the, of this, one thing also. The corporal position was incorporated into the budget for this year, so there's no, there'll be no into the budget. I just want to make that, say that first. But then I'll make the motion to start the process to hire corporals. Do I have a second?
Iser. Savage.
Yeah.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rochus.
Yes. Councilman Savage, do you have the agenda for year two finally? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2024-025 for Northern National Bank Trust and Investment for Sunbury Celebration 2024.
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser. Rochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yeah.
Keep going, Councilman Savage.
I'm, I will also make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for, for the general fund in the amount of $58,337.68, private grants in the amount of $46,288.67, and payroll in the amount of $88,198.53.
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Iser. Savage.
Yeah.
Rochus.
Yes. Moving on to discussion topics, the police fence. We spoke of about that last meeting, real briefly about trying to finish, we'll call it the construction of the police department with enclosing a fence. We spoke about some of the reasons why we choose to want to have that fence. Chief, you said you had quotes on fence, from fencing companies, we'll call it.
I've had with three different, three different fencing companies. I have not got any quotes. I, I do have one from a previous police meeting in the amount of about $35,000.
Okay. Like I said, I just want to try to keep that whole one here with that process. Try to get that stuff enclosed. I remember the chief and we expressed some of the issues that we have had with, you know, people throwing stuff, people driving through the parking lot, those types of things. This makes a little bit more secure factor for the officers and the people being possibly transported into the building.
I have a question. Is there enough room to use up for an impound lot also?
Basically the parking lot mass, but at this point I, it's, we can take up some spots there. So I spoke with Walker, I spoke with the mayor and Councilman Iser about possibly something down at the city barn area. Walker had shown me an area and stuff like that that may work out as well.
Questions on the fences for anyone? All right, moving on to police grants. I know last time meeting we spoke about, I believe it was vests, about how we're gonna need, chief, how many need? Six, or is that, I can't remember.
How many, three definitely. Three partners, just three, they're never good, the eighth day was the first day of the academy. So the individuals, they started the academy, this is their first day. But we are running three vests for them and then approximately three more vests that are going to be expiring and then next year will also be vests expiring as well.
Yeah, and what, I mean, that's probably what a cost of, that's how much, I forget.
It may work between 12 and, you know, 16, hard to.
Yeah, so I know the chief is looking into some grants there. I know, Derek, I don't know what you've been looking into, so.
I talked to chief a little bit today. The JAG grant that I guess we've gone toward the past that was closed for this year at this point, so we would have to fight that issue. So we're looking at different, well, I should say, I'm looking at different of their avenues for.
All right, awesome. And does it give everyone up? They also, chief, I know you spoke with InfraDab, we're gonna need new computers towards the end of the year to be able to update on these new software that's coming out. I just don't care what Windows it is.
I look like Windows.
Yeah, I agree, but it's the newest one.
It would have to be like a rule C Y, it's something that we really can look at in the infrastructure of our department as well as this same hall. It's just one other thing on the police grants. We had spoke with somebody, I don't know if I'm out of turn here on, on speaking this, but CSIU also has a grant to fund a, a police officer for how, how would we elect him to pay the fee for the back elementary and also for Sesquahana Avenue at the five star. We spoke to them about before, it was $30 an hour that they were willing to pay. I, I'd like to take a venture down that road again, now that we have some part-time workers, even look at maybe hiring a part-time person for that, given their way to fund that. But also, we'd be able to use that individual on the hours that they wouldn't be at the school, if they use a part-time person.
So with the CSIU, so they're looking for, we'll call it resource officer at the two locations, Beck and the Five Star, and also from, from our, from our department. So long story short, I'm just, I'm just using this number, I might not say this is the exact number. So of, of officer's salary, they would pay sixty percent of their salary for the time that they would use him, and we'd have to pay the other forty percent of the salary. So pretty much, they're, they're paying partial of the individual's salary throughout their tenure working for us. So basically, as chief said, they say they only need them for, I'm just using this number, I'm not saying this exact number, for four hours a day, we'd get them for the other four hours a day. And then, and therefore it'd be like a sixty, forty split on the salary and all those types of things. They would report, they would be reporting to us about the same time we're reporting to them during their hours. And then during the summer months, they'd be fully employed with us, for the summer months, because there is no class taking place.
It's just...
No, it's still...
The whole year's...
Yeah, the whole thing is sixty, forty, so...
And what it looks like, maybe it would be a part-time officer, so there's no benefits. There's no benefits to this, it'd be basically a part-time officer. But they're willing to pay that. Our officer's now a part-time officer, paying twenty-eight dollars an hour. So it would be that twenty-eight dollars an hour, but they're willing to pay thirty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so like he said there, so we pay our part-timers twenty-eight, I forget what it was. But they would say, hey, we would, we would pay the officer thirty dollars an hour during that stint that they're working. So it's just something we wanna look into, to help get another part-timer on the street, and also the cost of, in reality, of forty percent of what an officer would cost.
And if it's a school resource officer, our officers responding to this, looking a lot, they, we, we have more calls there and have actual things on the individuals that those...
Chief, my question though is, it's costing the taxpayers money for them to work for the school.
No, 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 so it, so it's covered, so they're, they cover that portion, meaning, so I'm just gonna use a rough, rough number here too. Let's say it costs forty thousand dollars an hour.
Now listen back to the other rate, you said we're paying twenty-eight dollars an hour?
We pay twenty-eight dollars an hour, they're willing to pay thirty dollars.
We lose money.
No, 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 they covered, like if it's costing twenty-eight dollars to have them, they'll pay thirty.
You take twenty-eight dollars and put all of the taxes and the bennies on there.
There's no benefits.
No, 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 I said the bens comp, okay, the taxes.
But we gotta do that regardless if it's, if we, if we have a higher part-timer, we have to pay those regardless.
What I'm saying is, we figure out exactly what it costs us an hour to have a guy, and that's what they pay us. We should be subsidizing that gentleman working...
No, 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 it, it won't, because like, this, I'm just gonna use a rough number here. That's to say they work fifty percent with us, fifty percent with them, I'm just using that as a number. If it costs forty thousand dollars, they will pay sixty percent regardless if he works forty percent with us, works thirty, or works eighty. So like, the, the salary would be sixty percent covered by them regardless if they work for us for only twenty-five percent and then for seventy.
And that's why I put it in this question, what I'd like to do is...
Next meeting, I'll bring back the actual number. If you're paying somebody twenty-eight dollars, I'll bring the actual number back, what it costs the city taxpayer per hour for that man. As you're saying, it's based on, now your wage, you said thirty dollars, right? They're willing to pay, but it's costing us twenty, just from the salary itself. And I'll bring back the actual number, let that and do all the taxes, I'd say exactly what it is.
Yeah, and that's why it's a good discussion, I, I just wanna look, I just wanna be able to look into it a little bit more.
Yeah.
And give the numbers, it's not something that we have to go jumping on. I just, I'd like to look at it for the next four year, I don't want you guys to throw it before and go...
Yeah.
Go for it, that works.
Is there, is this like a grant timeline for this, or is this kind of rolling?
This is...
It's a rolling one, it's like it goes in effect, usually they don't, they usually put it in the school, like that, themselves, even the school. They do, and not give it to that program. But I get all the information, you guys can just...
That works. And listen, just going back to the computers also, something we should, we should look into, look for grant opportunities. If we need to do an overhaul of our whole network, that's not, I mean, Steve's regular eighteen hundred dollars computer, and it's not gonna be very cheap to replace fifty, sixty computers in the city, so...
We also have the, one other grant that I opened to Survivor on, is twenty-nine million dollar grant that's available for body worn cameras. I'd like to see if it comes with the grant or some other grant, and we've had, or it passed along to Survivor.
And it's like one of those things, regardless if we get the grant or not, we still need to keep our equipment updated, so it's help cover our cost of taxpayers, so hopefully we can get some money out of that grant. Questions on the grants for police, anyone? Alright, moving on to the boat, boat launch lights. Councilman Ister and I spoke previously about how they're getting looked into, they're gonna get the bucket truck down there with our new electrician, they see, hopefully get them up and running, so it's more safe. Any questions, anyone? Alright, there are a few announcements. Accepting letters of interest for the one spot on the hard, must be licensed contractor. Accepting letters of interest for the seven open spots on the nuisance abatement of appeals. Sunbury Celebration will be taking place July thirteenth up at the Forest Street complex. That's the main date, but there's other small events taking place the Friday and the Thursday before. The Ta Ta Trot will be taking place on July thirteenth. The DEI Diversity Festival will take place on Saturday, July twentieth at Cameron Park. Christmas in July is Saturday, July twenty-seventh from nine to four at Cameron Park. National Night Out, it will be August sixth from five to eight. Also, on July twenty-third, Joe Snedeker will be doing his yearly Go Joe, coming to Sunbury here at noon on July twenty-third. We're trying to do some small stuff in the park here to help try to raise funds for the Go Joe effort. So hopefully you can come down, I know, trying to get some volunteers to be in the dunk tank to, you know, help raise some funds, have a couple snacks for sale, also to go towards all of the, uh, for the Go Joe for all the kids. I think I saw Mr. Whipple raising his hand, he volunteered to throw.
No, no, what I was doing is pushing for all of you to be ducking.
July twenty-third, he gets here around noon, I think it's from eleven to one, we're gonna have some stuff in the park to welcome him. So hopefully everyone's available, come down, see Joe, take pictures, help raise money for the Go Joe. As I said, National Night Out will be taking place Tuesday, August sixth from five to eight. Latino Festival Riverfront will take place Saturday, August tenth. River Fest is August sixteenth and seventeenth down at Merle Mills Park. Arts and curiosity Fest is Saturday, September fourteenth at Stro Alley. And the next council meeting will take place July twenty-second at six fifteen here. Any other announcements for many of you? Alright, is there any public comment at this time? Alright, can we say your name?
Hi, Jody Arthur. Executive Director for Suburban Revitalization and a team leader for the Pretty Communities Team Downtown Sunbury. I want to thank the council for supporting the budget, state budget, twenty-five million dollar increase in Main Street banners program. That Main Street is gonna become very important to us as we go through our downtown revitalization process and then be able to implement things like hiring a Main Street manager, sod grants, things like that. The, um, the budget for Main Street programs, which is managed through Pennsylvania Downtown Center, had been decreased over the last decade or so, and this is an effort to put money back into investing in Main Street. So when you ask about, you know, applying the grants, I just wanna make sure you understood that irrelevance to us is actually very specific and very important, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, your efforts. Any other public comment? Please say your name, sir.
Dave Whipple, Ed Snab, from Sunbury. Uh, the other week when I was here, and he made a comment about Parker Street, and I also made a comment about the not sweeping streets on a regular basis. So when I was here Monday night, I talked to him about that. Tuesday, they painted stripes, never swept a damn street. Painted right over the dirt, now what kind of sense does that make? Can I just say, it's a waste of money. When you just have it done to the right, that's why you should all have shirts like this.
And you can't read your shirt, just look at it later. Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name.
Victoria Rosenkrantz. My understanding was last council meeting, you guys were discussing like the sandwich boards and things in Cameron Park for the businesses around. My, my concern with that is, is obviously no mold, not marketing business, that's not it at all. But I'm gonna go back to the question of what happened to the flags that the city got that the businesses could sign up for them and have outside the business to highlight their business and all of that, so...
The, the last time I knew about the flags, businesses came in and knocked them out, I don't think it was across the town last year. And throughout the years, nothing says anything was false, it's the nature of the beast, some of them got not taken care of, we'll call it. And it, it's just like, you know, there are elements all year round, and eventually they wear out. So I don't know if we've gotten any new ones since then, I don't know if there's any left, to be honest, so I don't, that's the best I can answer on the flag issue.
Okay, so this brings me to that discussion, because when that flag program started, nobody, nobody knew who was doing it. So I took letters out, and it was supposed to be thirty days. So the businesses were supposed to sign, assign paperwork. I literally hand-delivered flags, and the business brought the paperwork back to Cameron. So that's my concern with if we're gonna put sandwich board in Cameron Park. I personally think it's gonna be tacky. My concern is, who's gonna be responsible to communicate that information when there's events in Cameron Park to those businesses to not have sandwich boards sitting over there? If you're going to allow it, I'm going to ask that you make it uniform, that the sandwich boards need to be this size, this color, or whatever, because I go back to a store on Market Street that had a Sharpie marker sign. Okay, and I don't want Cameron Park to look like that, okay? And it also just brings me to all the events that are happening, and I don't want to be getting into tussles with businesses because there's sandwich boards in there. And also at Christmas time, I'm going, yes, please don't have sandwich boards in the park during Christmas with all the decorations and things like that. So again, I want businesses to advertise, but I think there's probably a better way than having all that set in Cameron Park. I'm just worried if it's not uniform, it's gonna look really filthy.
I agree with you, they should be uniformed, as you said, X by X.
You know, whatever, and who is responsible for communicating those things to the businesses, like, hey, it needs to be between this time and this time. But then we also just go back to, again, the question was, well, who's moving it when we're mowing, and who's putting it back? And then if the, the DPW moves the sign and it gets broken or ran over, when the businesses gonna be coming back to you guys saying, hey, you owe me a sign, because the mower hit the, you know, all of that stuff. So I'm just saying, there, there's gotta be a way, so a better way. And here's, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here for a minute. So if you take Cameron Park out of, say it's not there, right? Is that any different around here than it is going up Forest Street? It's not, okay, because there's still parking meters, and they're still blocking those businesses' parking, okay? So that's all I wanna say. You know I wanna support businesses, and I do, I'm just concerned it's gonna all fall back, that's all, so...
Thank you, Becky.
Mr. Ister, I have to say...
Jim.
Oh, sorry, Jim. I, but I have to say this, when I watched that video, I said, oh my God, Jim and I are on the same page.
And that's a direct quote, I'm using.
But anyway, again, whatever I can, whatever, I have suggestions, but you know, I don't know, you know...
Vicky?
Yeah.
Just FYI?
Yeah.
I spoke with John today, and the issue's going to be also with that idea of sandwich boards. It's, it's a state right of way, it's a state road, so...
I forgot the state, yes, yes, that was...
Well, not only that, but we can't put them in a state right of way.
Right, right.
By law, I mean, that's why there's no political signs on Cameron Park, because you can't put them where they can be seen due to the state right of way, that's just another issue.
Yeah, my concern with that was too, because people are gonna slow down to read them, you know? And it's sort of like our rotary signs that were ripped out of the ground out by the ballpark, and we never got our rotary sign back because they weren't, they were not twenty feet off the road, you know? So that, that kind of makes it, but anyway, so that's just, you know...
However, Councilman Marthart chooses to play the topic is up to him.
I get the point, I just, I just am concerned about.
I had a thought on about council approval, and how the signs go up from the building, attach to the building, but how?
I, I think Megan Beck and Jody Kirk, I don't know, you guys, they talked about that in one of the, about coming off, so that when they're coming down, they can see the signs coming off.
So signs perpendicular to the, yeah, attached to the building?
That's what I was trying to...
Perpendicular, is that a word?
Yeah, and we actually had been hoping to, um, get some local funding, not state funding, because there's a lot of, a lot of red tape associated with state funding for sod grants. But if the businesses are interested in updating their signs, it is possible, I mean, it's allowable for, say, the city to put that in a budget, ten thousand, the fifty thousand, whatever you could afford in a budget that maybe then we could match with a private foundations, you know, matching funds, make it a little bigger, where then a sign, say, costs three to four thousand dollars with lighting and what have you, that we might be able to assist business owners in, in getting those signs installed. But there would be some work to be done to, to, you know, survey the business owners, find out who's interested, sign design, all of that stuff, it's not something we can, you know, push go on instantaneously. But if that's something that you want to pursue, we can work together to pursue that.
It sounds like it should come out on a code budget, sounds like a code, it should be a code budget.
Well, that's it. If we're doing anything, we need to look at our current ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have two ordinances, one for central business and one for other, that's allowed. It might be a certain size. There's a certain size hanging out so far, so that might be something you wanna look at before you do this, to revise ordinances.
One permission, um, Christmas in July banners are coming, is it okay that I, the hooks are already down, Frank? Can I put the touch of truck one on one side and the Christmas in July?
Oh, should be all?
Okay, yeah, I have friends that say, but okay.
Alright, any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? Alright, adjourn this meeting.